The recording has started.
Nice. Special session is called over referring to the city's healthcare plan. Joel, if you can explain to us what all these documents are that we have.
Healthcare, you will call?
Oh.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Here.
Yes.
Yes. That's good. All right, in honor of veterans' day since we're hosting this on the federal, here we descend for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silent reflection for all the veterans in the room, please. Thank you, have a seat.
Alright, so the first um first packet of papers is your commit agreement. So that's your agreement with Benetcon. All the rules, regulations where we have to give notifications. The second package, your summary of the city of summary group health plan, this is where we put our input into the plan, whether you want the domestic style issues, eligibility. This is what we can change and that's why we're here. So you will look on the back of that first page, there's our elections. And then next one is your senior rates. For the retirees. Next one gives you all employees with the breakdown of departments, the cost of the health insurance, what it will be for next year. And then the last couple pages is just a proposal for other people I've been talking to that were your review, I don't think we're going over that today. They're willing to come and talk to you and show you the comparison to what we have now and what they can offer us and they're still working on the stop loss coverage. Oh yeah, and then, sorry, I didn't have this one in my packet. There's a sheet that will give you our 2021 rates at our current deductibles. And then it will also break it down for 400.
Right?
For three different options.
For three different options. They have three different levels of deductible.
Alright, Chris, if you can just, let's dive in here because we are, we have 45 minutes.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, look at you guys, where, where you want to start. So, we can start on that. Option one, option two, option three, because that may be the easiest thing to kind of dive into.
What do we have with current time?
Yeah, about the current one, where it's 200 for a single deductible, 400 for a family deductible for the year.
It looks like we have the best plan option on this, but.
Good, best thing that they offer.
No, yeah, but the high ask for those quotes, you can ask for a thousand dollar deductible for a single if you wanted to. These are the three I asked.
And what we looked at.
Did we raise the deductible last year?
No.
We raised COPAs. We raised COPAs last year.
Yes. Yep, 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 yep. Did we pre-raise the office visit COPA, right? 10 to 20?
No, it was for emergency, emergency and specialist.
Okay. So anyways, so that 200 or 400, basically that they're just giving us three options. Option one's 300, 600. Option two, 40. Option three, 500, 1000. That's single versus family.
And that, that's, they would have to pay that deductible through the year.
Yes, they would pay that deductible out of their own pocket throughout the year. Um, it, it doesn't make sense to do like a reimbursement plan of that to get it back down to what we're paying now. It's basically if you're raising the deductible, you're raising the deductible for the employee. Because to, so for instance, option three, if you were to go up to that and then say, okay, we're gonna pay all of those people back at $600 in difference from a family plan to the new 1,000. Just 24 people at $600 a pop that you're paying. You're gonna pay a lot more than the $17,000 in savings that you have on that. Plus, uh, the $300 difference for the, I think six, what I just counted on individual plans, right now.
Question being, it doesn't really give us our savings out.
It does.
At the bottom, if you look there, it shows the total cost for the year for each of the options. And then underneath that is the savings for that option for the year.
So option three is 17,224,000 a year savings. Option two is 12,000, option one is 8,200.
This is for the plan that exists.
Well, the.
If we would change her to plan one.
Yes, exactly. And this is what plan one, what our new rate is. Option one, two, and three is that the plan will be going down.
17,000. That 17,000 is for every employee.
That's not each.
That's.
No, and that's a whole.
A whole.
That's as a whole, of what it would save when everybody go up and down.
So he rose, chose option three for the deductible on the employees, the total savings that save is 17,224.
And he said they're just taking that off of your max cost plan. So they, they showed that they have the 2021 total max cost. You can see that number going down across the way for each one, based off what our total max cost is gonna be for this year, which is probably is a 938,000 dollar a year range is what it roughly would be right now. So, that's one option. That, this is a decent option because if you do it this way versus increasing the total contribution for the employee, it's less money for them while parent, because if, let's say we were to go, let's say we go to 14%, so 7%, that's 2,900 dollars each employee on a family plan, more out of pocket per year versus the 600 dollar deductible. So that's one option, ways to save money on the healthcare. I'm saying you have to do it, but that's one option. So, you guys, if you have input, questions, we can stop there before we move on to the other ways to save potential money.
May as well make a decision on these.
We'll do, I'll look at all of them.
I think we have to look at all of the first and make a decision after you see up to all the options.
I agree. Because you don't know, if you do one, you don't know how to cut them all. The, uh, the next one then would be on, um, the page two of that plan, which has all our 29. So it talks about our eligible employees, talks about our eligible retirees. Really nothing in there that you can change. Um, spouses, independents, or retirees are eligible. Can't change that from what I gather because it's only police retirees and that's well past. Um, the only ones that really you can change are spouse exclusion and coverage for domestic partners. Those are the only two that you could change.
Just letting you know, the, the one domestic partner non-uniform is married. She got married several years ago.
Yeah, that's what I found out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, to me, that again, I don't think that matters because realistically, when you're trying to do a set of plan for the future, you're gonna have employees on it. Does your plan make sense? And to me, right now, it says same-sex domestic partners, no. Opposite-sex domestic partners, yes. So either you want to do that, to either remove the domestic partner language altogether, which is my, my preference, or you put both of the yes. The two thoughts. But to me, most of Benetcon's plans are not offering it to, um, there's most of them right now. Yeah. And for the one that we don't know, um, person, even if that person was to come off, they'd be eligible for COBRA. So they would not, January 1st would not mean that they would have absolutely no health insurance. They would just go for COBRA. If they wanted to go that route, that's one route that they could, because it says that right on the next page. But if, if anybody's medical coverage is terminated because there's something on here, um, they're eligible for COBRA. At that point, Benetcon. So you said there would be one person potentially, but you don't know for sure.
Oh, I guess if they don't have that much.
Well, if, on the, on the domestic partner one, the only thing I don't know is whether that person would be classified as a dependent. Um, and I'm told, we don't, we don't know.
We do know now.
A domestic partner?
Well, a dependent period.
Okay.
I can define dependent as of today. Um, I did the research this morning concerning dependents and under the Pennsylvania Health and Accident Insurance Act, um, a dependent is specifically delineated as a child of the insured, insured employee up through and including the age of 29. If that child is not married, has no dependents, is a resident of Pennsylvania, and has not provided coverage elsewhere.
29, yeah?
Up, up through 29, including 29.
It does not say anything about domestic partner or spouse.
No, sir, it's only children.
Okay, so then this would affect our entire police department at that point. Um, because our police contract does say that we would offer, um, only to the plan participant and their dependents. Is what our contract says, Brad and Mike.
Correct. Well, then, why are we now applying health insurance to spouses? Why are we doing that now?
What do you mean?
Why are we allowing that now? Is it something we allow?
Allowing you into domestic partners?
Correct.
It's, it's on there that we did in the plan, but we can change the plan at any time.
Okay, because before you get too deep.
Sure.
Do you mind if I say two things?
Yes.
Two things, and I, I don't want to offend anybody here, but I think it's, we're real late in the game here. We're real late in the game because I know I've been after the health insurance stuff all year long. And I've had discussions with you, so, about trying to find something better for the city. I know I've been very boisterous with some, you know, the people that deal with the health insurance department. And like, we need to be getting on this early because I know how Benetcon works every year, it's, it's the same thing. The other thing is, and it's neither here nor there, it's not, I'm trying to prevent any type of grievable issues. The only other issue you're gonna have is you have to negotiate this with the, with the union prior to doing any changes to the healthcare plan. Where does it say that? In Article 26. Any changes to the healthcare plan during the tenure of the contract shall be discussed with the association prior to changing the healthcare plan during the terms set of contract. So it hasn't been done, I'm trying to give you the heads up, but you probably want to, you need to have a meeting with the, the union president to prevent that.
So, Joel asks you a question. Any changes?
I was gonna bring up the same thing, quite honestly, because in my research.
And, 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 and the only reason I say it's late in the game is, I wish we'd have been doing this a month and a half, two months ago to prevent all this. I'm just trying to prevent anything coming out, that's all, that's all I'm trying to do.
We have to, so yeah.
I'm not saying you haven't been doing anything, but I know how this sort of health insurance, it's so, it's screw every year.
It's a month, yeah.
So, it's the stop loss coverage that's holding us up.
Back to the dependent part. So, just what I understand, maybe we're all screwed. It's only allowing children as the dependent. Children under, unless it's otherwise defined in the plan, okay? Dependent is a child of the insured employee up to age 29, who doesn't have their own dependents and all those other things, et cetera. Um, and it's only children. Now, the one issue is, I don't know exactly what this is, the summary of summary group health plan. Okay, this thing that we were looking at. Because on the second page, there it states that all retired police employees, higher part of 1990, are remain, may remain eligible for the plan along with their spouses and dependents for life. And then any retired police employees after 1990 may remain eligible for the plan along with their spouses and dependents until Medicare eligible. Um. And then it states spouses and dependents of retirees are eligible as indicated above. I know the spouses part is not in the language of the contract. However, it is here, and I don't know what this is, this document that I'm looking at.
This is what I said everybody needed to review because it has a third review for some of these. So these were what the city put in. These are the options the city elected through Benetcon, our plan.
Alright. And I guess my question becomes, this had to be put in for a reason? And if those police officers who are now retired had a contract at the time they retired that said this, that they will be eligible for life along with their spouse, so they will be eligible until they get Medicare, we can't undo that.
No.
Okay, I'm just, I just want everybody to be aware of that.
There would be seven retirees and spouses that are still on.
And is there also a spouse? There was a spouse.
There's more than one spouse.
No, no, I'm in a spouse without a retiree.
Potentially. I'm just going by the rate that's being.
I'm sorry, go.
Yeah.
Female, that's his wife.
A lot of them it looks like are just on the Medicare plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's only, uh.
Just having left and are not Medicare.
And yours, I think, uh, 2022, there's two, there's probably 65, I think. So then we had to figure it out, there's 11 more years until they're all 65 old. My question back to that lawyer you're reading.
Mm-hmm.
Of the dependent described as a child, not a spouse.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How does that affect that officer with wife or the girlfriend? She's not a child. She's, she's not a child of the officer. So according even to the contract, it says. Well, but backing up Jim, under this document that we had chosen before with Benetcon, domestic partners are covered. What I was reading to you is the language of the state act that defines dependents only. So if it only says the employee and their dependent, that means they're kidding. If it says the employee, their spouse and the, and dependents, that's wife and whoever else.
And, and I'll go on, because I was, I sat on some of those negotiations, when, on the last couple contracts. I don't know where dependent per se came in, but I know that we all assumed the dependent was also your spouse going through that whole negotiation. We never talked about just kids or not your wife or stuff like that. That was always part of the negotiations when it came to, came to the healthcare part or any other benefits, it would include the spouse. That's why we had to 100, 100%, uh, what is benefit, I'm just trying to give you a little history, that's all I'm.
I think the spouse is.
Correct. They're not, no, that's not what they're, that's what.
They're treated separately in the plan.
They're treated separately in the plan, yeah.
But what I'm saying is when we negotiated contracts for like healthcare or anything else, it was your, the family. You've got a, your family was covered under your insurance, whether it be your dependent, your wife, spouse. Now it just says dependents in the contract, I understand that, but I think we're, again, goes back to being negotiated with the, you need to talk to the union first. I'm saying you gotta negotiate, but does the union need to talk to them first? And that's why I said we're kind of late in the game. You guys gotta have a decision by Friday. I just, I don't, I'm trying to prevent anything coming out of this.
What would you? Um, honestly, I think Brad's correct in that we have to discuss it with the union because it was part of the negotiations. I don't, no, I said discuss. If, we have to discuss it with them because it was part of our negotiations previously for the contract. Now, that does not mean necessarily that legally a dependent equals a spouse, okay? It doesn't mean that. But what it does mean is, we have to also, and I hate to even say this, but we have to also consider the cost of any, how should I say? Complaints filed by the police unit. Screaming, says thank you, I couldn't come up with the word, I was having a brain. But there's only one uniform person that's.
Depending on what we did.
Only one. Only one, the domestic partner, but they all have, I mean, not all, but.
No, well, the spouse that will be fixed is if they have a job somewhere else and they're employed.
Right, yes.
That's only affecting.
Right.
So, if, if none of them offer health insurance, it doesn't affect it.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, is, that's why I say we're kind of late in the game. I understand, we're trying to, you're trying to balance your budget, I get it, but I just, for me, it's.
But we could, we, so, we could, in essence, still discuss today. Discuss with the union tomorrow and meet again on Friday. Is that the way I'm?
You could do that, yes.
That way, I need to plan.
So is there really much of a discussion or just saying what it is? Or they say what we don't like?
Well, and that's the thing. I think that my suggestion to the council would be that you take a vote today because it may not, it may be a non-issue, but I would take a vote today, this is what we decide, and we're gonna take this to the council.
That we're not going to them.
You, exactly. That way, at least you know where you're at, because, I mean, depending on the vote, you don't have to go to them. I mean, depending what happens. So, I mean, I think that you have to do that first, so you put the card before.
What happens if I say no?
Then we decide whether or not we're going forward or risk a grievance. But I mean, there's only one person that's in consideration, no?
No, 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 it could affect, affect everybody. Only for the domestic partner issue, yes, one person, but everything else.
Well, it could be spouses could grieve it too.
So we haven't even gotten an actual potential plan changes within the plan of other things that could impact not just the union, but all city employees. And again, these are things that are common, they're not, I mean, just heard it last night, you know, like I said, that's what is employer, it's the exact same thing.
It's not, since last night, all the New York people, nobody, A, have heard about putting their girlfriend on, never heard about.
Yeah.
And second one, they all said, yeah, my company said, if I can get it over here, my wife gets over here, I can get it over here, I will take it over there. So don't come back over here.
Well, no matter what we do with this domestic thing, we need to make the same or same sex, opposite sex.
Yeah, so it'd either be changing opposites to no or changing same sex to yes. Uh, so that's one of the, so, we just want to go down to all the potential changes that are on board and then, so. Right went over the potential deductible change, went over the potential, uh, domestic partner change. The spouse with exclusion portion is the other part of it, and that's the part that would affect all employees, whether it's.
Spouse will always be, exclusion is only if the spouse is often insured where they work.
Exactly. That's it.
Alright, and that, we have the right to do that, just like the vice owner has the right to do that.
True. Yes. We also have the right to put in.
But as far as, as far as grievances we're gonna get out of that are still limited to the uniform.
Yes.
You're not gonna get grievances from.
Non-uniform, correct.
That's what I'm saying, we only have one. We only have one significant other.
Correct.
Okay? That, that would be.
Yeah, but technically they should agree on the spouse part if they want.
Okay, what if we don't do anything with the spouse part? Then what? Then they have, they're not gonna agree.
And then if you don't, just we do anything with the, the deductible, they have the right to look and announce.
Absolutely.
But again, we don't, that's, again, that's the total, we have to give us a recommendation. Right, what's grievable, what's not.
How many spouses do we have that are working somewhere?
Oh, a lot of, a lot of, my wife works somewhere else, which is not offer healthcare, which is.
Not offer healthcare, which is actually.
So it doesn't affect me, but there's other officers that have wives work, I don't know if they, I don't know, I don't dive into that sort of it.
To me, I, and, 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 I think if you start going down individual employee of like, what was this gonna impact? Instead of just an overarching city policy, I think you're putting yourself in line for easier grievances if you start singling people out.
The easiest thing to do is if we start it next year, I mean, it's time to do it, but you don't wanna do that, you want to start it Friday.
Well, no, we started one-on-one.
Well, okay.
Well, we had a vote by five, I think.
Right.
The plan, the plan changes have to be submitted to Benetcon by the 13th of November. And then if we're gonna leave Benetcon, we have to submit that in by the 30th of November, which is why this other plan is in progress now. We tried to do it earlier, this is when they got back.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Well, and this is, they just, this proposal just came in today.
Uh, this week.
This week, and it's been, we settled on this two months ago.
Two or three weeks ago.
Yeah, long time.
What, so let me ask you, what's the penalty if you leave Benetcon early?
Our stop loss. Right at, right on December 31st.
Because for me, I mean, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty, when they call for Benetcon, it's not very good phase on their part to give you something two weeks prior to its due. I mean, that's.
No, that's, that's the.
This is a proposal for the new company.
Because they're just.
Oh, the new company, yeah.
Because they're really trying to get that stop loss coverage.
Okay.
Because that's the biggest thing, because they could be hundreds of thousands of dollars to claim to death. We went to three, three different healthcare insurance providers. And they, over the course of the summer, giving them all the information they need. Very, very detailed information on our employees, dependents, all that stuff. And we came to the conclusion that it's too expensive because of the stock required for stop loss insurance. To leave Benetcon and go to one of those others. This other company has a different option. And all of the other ones back out won't even give us their final quotes because of that.
Is there an option to keep just the stop loss portion with Benetcon that you would change?
Yeah, why not?
They will offer, offer us a packet once we give them our termination.
We don't have to cost it.
We don't, but they want it until they say you terminate and then they give it to you.
Well, not the savings annually from, I mean, the bonus savings. To this other company. They're basically, what they're suggesting is what? You're going to Benetcon's hundreds of thousands of dollars cheaper. You're talking 250, 300,000 dollars a year cheaper.
No, well, not, when the municipal party did this company, they got that great rate too, they wanted to send the rate following, they're starting one month. Is that true? So then that's why they went back to Benetcon, because the rate was, was more, because they wanted to come on in rate and then all of a sudden, boom, they got way up.
I did explain that to them too, and they said it's because of the stop loss, they know they don't have to cover none of those claims. So they'll give you a lower premium in the end.
Yeah, and it's gonna go up.
But this company works with Benetcon as well as a broker, and they said that he, he took it to his top executive because they cannot believe what Benetcon is actually, how much your charge has the rates and our premiums.
So basically, to Kevin's point, if we went with a broker like this, and eventually Benetcon became the cheaper option again, they could switch us right back to the Benetcon. And it's, it's, we could bounce around. The broker for this could put us into wherever's the best rate that I hear at that point, and they would make their recommendations to us.
Do we have an extra waiver, please?
That's.
And just going back to, going back to the union stuff, the only thing the union can agree is that you don't discuss it with them. You guys do realize that, right? You can change the plan to anything you want.
That's what I thought you were saying.
You can change the plan to anything you want. You just need to discuss it with the union first, because if they decide to do anything.
Yeah.
We gotta have, because in the contract, it clearly reads that the cities are opposite, each officer and his or her dependents, the same health insurance package off to all those cities, that costs 10%. So you're covered there.
Yeah.
On that part, I knew that.
Is the union president working on ship right now?
Yeah, he's tied up.
Just my question, what I'd say.
I just stopped there, he's tied up.
And what Joel's recommendation was, because for us to discuss with the union would be unofficial at that point, then there was no vote attached to it, right?
Correct.
So a vote and then a discussion, you think is the way to go?
Well, let me back up just one more second, okay? And you, I'm gonna be very clear. Any change has to be discussed with the union.
Yes, okay, I agree.
Therefore, if we go from Benetcon to Exhibit A, we have to discuss. If we change anything, we have to discuss. That being said, I'm not looking for, I think what you're saying is a final vote today, but rather a conditional vote, like we talked about on Wednesday night, whereby the vote is conditioned upon first discussing it with the union. After it's discussed with the union, it would become an official vote, okay?
To do another meeting?
No.
Okay.
But it, but it's conditioned upon, it won't take effect until it's been discussed with the union. So that is legal.
Yeah, and just so you understand also that if the union itself, obviously it only affects one officer at this point, now the union themselves can say, you know, we've had other spouses before, you're changing it, you know, they, they could grieve it. And/or the individual officer that it affects, he can individually grieve, grieve it also. So you might, you could still get a grievance out of that one individual officer, and that just goes through the process. It's not that big of a deal, that's what I'm saying. Don't get excited about your grievance.
This is right.
It's just right, it's just right to do that, it's not a big deal, you know, so I wouldn't get too excited about that.
I think the first thing we should do is look at this new plan, because if we think we should change this plan, and that buys us time.
Because now that if, if we don't make any changes, and we don't leave Benetcon, this is the plan.
What about if we leave Benetcon?
That's why I say let's discuss this tonight and see whether. We don't know, I mean, I can't explain this to you 100% without that being here. I can look at it and assume some things, and I can assume some premiums, but I couldn't vote on this without talking to them further.
Plus, you don't have the information about the stop loss yet.
But the best part about this, Chris, is you're not, we know we got this program out there, so it can help us go forward next year.
I agree 100%.
You know, so we're not fighting, you just, you know, have cotton off the warrior. We'd be really prepared to switch next year this time. But, but someone's decision we're gonna make, see.
Yeah.
Have to be made, I don't care where we go.
Exactly. Even if you were to go to a new plan, you still would have to decide if you wanted the dependents in there, or if you're not dependent, domestic partners, spouse exclusion, all of that is still have to be decided.
That would buy us more time.
No, it's not, we need to vote on something tonight, but next year.
That's if we don't go.
But we, no, that's either way, either way, you have to decide.
This is just saying that if we leave Benetcon, we have to let them know by the end of the month.
Yes.
But if we take that new plan, we can tell that new plan what we want. It don't have to be by Friday.
I agree again, but if we don't leave Benetcon.
That's what I'm saying, I agree with you there.
Okay.
But if we leave Benetcon, it buys us time.
We don't rather leave it at it now, okay? Yeah, I mean, unless.
These, especially now, and still to take back to the police union.
These, especially now, and still to take back to the police union.
So it's disgusting.
Well, most of, either way.
Exactly. We still have to do the conditional vote on that. Because, I mean, on page five of the proposal, it has the suggested planning premium, it has the PPOs. But there's just so many things that, I mean, I can't figure out the grill at all, but it would be so much easier to just have one of their representatives.
I agree with you more.
Yeah.
But if it looks like it's going to be beneficial.
We don't know that yet.
Okay, well, then we gotta just bite the bullet and wait for next year.
I agree, we still have to the end of the year or month.
To make, to leave, to lose. But then you're saying bite the bullet on and make no policy changes at all this year?
Well, don't worry about this, and just work on making whatever policy changes we can on Benetton.
You're talking about changing this, we stay in there, but change what we want here with the domestic and the stop, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, you still do that today. Yes. And decide on.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand, so if we do that today.
Yes.
We have to meet with the police.
Yes.
Okay, then we decide next week, we're gonna go with these people, then we're gonna go through the slowest all over again. But we have to meet with the police again.
I thought we gotta have a decision.
It's because if you make any changes to the Benetton plan.
Yes.
That has to be done by Friday.
I understand that, I understand.
And you can't wait to decide whether or not to stay.
If we leave Benetton next week, or decide when we leave Benetton next week, or the twenty ninth of July, we gotta go do the same thing when the police all over again.
Yeah, also, also is, you gotta, you gotta notify them to talk.
But I don't think the police are gonna complain if the price is gonna drop that much. And I would love to say, yeah, if we're gonna see that much of a decrease in premium, yeah, let's, let's go right now. But without then finalizing the, the stop gap.
You have a very important piece of information that's missing tonight.
That's gonna be a large.
That's the cost of the stop loss.
The, the stop gap, yes.
Yes, yes, and if.
And we have no idea what, what we're paying.
Because the company is still working on getting a quote for it.
Our current company.
Now.
No, the, the proposal company.
And the new one can't just request that information from us, they can't request it from Benetton, it's gotta go directly through capital blue, right?
And it, yeah.
And then, and it's between the two healthcare providers that are talking to each other, has nothing to even do with the broker that's trying to focus. So.
So like now, if we would have that one here.
No, we should, I mean.
He's, I mean, he's, every day he's in town.
They know our deadlines, they know, they have to have a full presentation to us if they want our business by that last meeting that Monday.
This is the what, the twenty third is the last, or the second?
Twenty third.
Is our next meeting, right, council?
Yeah, they have to have a presentation ready to go for them, so we can see all the information, and then probably do another special session to make a decision at that point then. Give ourselves time.
Have we talked to Benetton about how these grievances are killing the city and they're taking health insurance out?
No, I understand, I'm just.
My contract.
Healthcare is killing every organization there in the country.
Yeah. They, they can afford it.
The, the question I have, and I'm not sure I understand, or that all of you do. But if you decide tonight, I wanna do this and this and this, and we have Benetton. And we tell them that by Friday, you still have the option to get out of Benetton till the end of the month.
Yes.
Okay, now I understand, I just, I didn't get the switch.
You, you just, you have two different deadlines.
I understand.
That they're giving you.
I understand.
And we only got the change one, I remember last week, there was a deadline, change, I'm going to spend all sorts of money, but I thought it was the same. And leave or change on the same day, that's not case.
To have the ID cards printed out.
Yeah.
Can we do one without the other right now?
What do you mean?
Can we do the non-union without being?
No, it's a plan, you can't screw the people. Cause they don't care about our union contract, union contract.
What issues do we have if we do contingent votes if anyone's talking to a police?
No, you guys pretty much sell your own argument, you can do a conditional vote upon that you're gonna meet with the union to discuss these issues, that's, and that's what.
And the union's not gonna be like, well, you make this all.
They, they can do, they can, no, I'm saying, they can do anything you want, it's a grievance, it's nothing to get excited about, it's, it's part of the process, if they wanna.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, we can't stop them from grieving.
You can't, you're not gonna stop it. But it's not, not a big deal, really, it's, it's gonna come to me, then it's gonna go to you, and it's gonna go to council, it's just the process.
Maybe I should jump in at this point and spell a couple of things out real quick.
Joe.
There's somebody on there.
Um, I think there's really. Two issues with four total questions that you guys gotta vote on tonight, and we're running out of time. So can I set those forth, what I think is up for discussion? And then you guys move forward with that, would that be all right with everybody?
Sounds good.
All right, um, the one issue is domestic partners, either include them all, or you include none, okay? The second issue is spouses, and you have three choices there. You can keep all of them and keep paying as we are now. You can say if you're offered, if the spouse is offered coverage, they have to take it. Or, what's that? Other board, sure. Or you can say, if the spouse is offered coverage and it doesn't cost more than X, they have to take it, okay? And the X is, if ours costs a hundred bucks a month and theirs is three hundred bucks a month, they don't have to take it because it's a hundred percent, two hundred percent more than ours.
Okay, I don't even know our exact cost, ours, or anybody that would have a spouse on there, the cost to the employees two hundred and forty-three dollars a month, that's what the cost would be.
So those are what I see as your issues, that you have to resolve tonight. Everything else, if you take a conditional vote on those issues.
And that, the.
And the deductible, I'm sorry, Chris, I misspoke, I forgot, I came up at the beginning, so three issues, um, for this evening, if you can get through those. And do a conditional vote, conditioned upon it becoming final, after discussion with the union, the officers' union. We can move forward for Friday, then after Friday, we're gonna have to have those folks from the new broker come in and tell us what's what with the stop, stop gap from the new insurance.
All right, so I.
Right, I wanna interject one thing on behalf of the employees, that this is a very emotional issue for them. That this affects them very deeply and how much they're gonna have to pay perhaps for their insurance, they don't have the money to, to absorb an increase in their cost. Um, if you're doing this to balance the budget, I want you to think very hard about that, and I think that you should have a firmer idea of what our financial situation is, I think you can find the savings in the budget without doing this. Or you can have minimal savings just by changing the, the deductibles. But I, you know, on behalf of the employees, I'm advocating.
I agree with you totally, Jim.
I can agree too, the only thing. The only thing that I can say is the plan that we offer, regardless of the changes that we make tonight, is far superior than anything in here. Just, I mean.
Oh, no, I just got denied, so I can't, I can't get an operation for myself, you know, it's far superior. I have a health problem, I'm not gonna do anything.
Kevin, they're quit, that's not a decision.
I understand, that's right, James, that's a great answer. No good answers. I don't care so much about.
You said your credos like.
No, I'm gonna say, I've never said that.
Yes, you did.
Said that, they said the, the, the thing itself does not do all that great. Do not say that, James, open the windowsman mouth.
I'll help you out.
Hey, I'm sure you are.
Yeah. Some of the problem we have here, this was never discussed in the table before.
Then, then it needs to be discussed, because it's a lot of money.
We've let you figure that out.
All right, so, let's vote for the first vote.
All right, let's go on the domestic partner portion. Remove it, or make them vote the same?
Oh, what? My opinion, I think we should keep going, the same, like, yes, that, it should be awkward.
Why?
Why? Because if someone's coming on here, they've been together, I mean, today's world, like, a lot of people are getting married and they've been together for ten, fifteen years.
Why are they not getting married?
Well, I, I mean, honestly, they know how to work the system, because it's smart, you're a lot of, I mean, look.
There's, there's a reason.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's smart on there, right, I'm not saying you have to like it, but I'm just saying, that's my opinion, I mean, I'm, opinions differ, I'm just. That's how I.
The way this is written up, there's, there's no time here that.
I mean, I think.
You can make criteria.
Why, that's, that's.
I think they should consider together for next month.
Well, you just have to be careful on discriminatory practices, so if you're gonna allow one live in. You can't say, we're only gonna allow livings if X, okay, you can put criteria on it, you can put a timeframe on it, but you just have to be careful with what you're doing.
Can we? Eliminate that with the grandfather laws for all, for, for people that are already, because there's only one. No.
No, because the whole, the whole policy has to change, is they won't let us grandfathers.
Okay. My issue with domestic partners is if there's no criteria on how long they have to be together, then you, you have someone that bounces from relationship to relationship every couple of years.
With the criteria received.
Right, so we'd have to define it.
And Joel would carefully work.
And I would carefully work, I'm just telling you, we'd have to be careful.
Cause I know with my own personal appointment, domestic partners are accepted, but there's criteria happen.
So.
Is your timeframe yours?
Yes, I, I, I think, I don't, don't quote me, but I think we have to live together for a minimum of six months and have, uh, shown proof that we're.
Proof that you're living in the same.
And, and we're sharing data this time, yes, you made it to the same bill, that kind of stuff.
And that's why you have that with this one off, they've been together for a very long time, and I, I get it, I get it, I understand.
I've been looking at this as any individual, like, we're not looking at, this is a one, a decision to affect one person, and we know we're gonna save this amount or any of that kind of stuff, it's more of. Kevin, and Kevin and Joey's point, I agree that there's a, there's a cost to the employees, but by sometimes not making these changes for the future. It's you have a couple of employees that are affected, or you have the entire practice affected, so could we find the savings? Yes, potentially this year we could, but as these costs continue to rise of healthcare, will we always be able to find them?
And that's what I'm just saying, is you don't have to rush on this decision.
Well, I agree, I did hear that.
This year, and you'll have, I mean, Pete's saying that the stamp program coming out and give you a better, more fidelity on the look of the financial status and what you can do better in budgeting practices, in stabilizing your workforce and your wage practices and, and all of that. Give you some, some, uh, I guess, kind of support for the decision that you will make.
But jumping back to the wage practice, and every time you mention that, wages are lower.
I know, and it shouldn't.
No, it's.
We need to have that over, overall look of our entire program.
You know, sitting back there making criticizing this council, America, like, we don't care about the employees, I know you didn't say it to him, I'm just saying that. You know, that's not fair, because you know, you're, that helped balance the budget.
I'm sorry, Jim, I agree with it totally, but I'm not saying that.
And, and here again.
I'm not criticizing anybody up there, Jim, so don't take that away.
I did.
Well, I'm sorry, Jim, you hurt mine too. You don't care about me, that really hurts my feelings.
Joel, then, did I say that? This is my opinion, I also get mine.
One thing to say to the mayor, it has to be here for the, for the year.
Yes.
Yeah. But we can change it at any time, go and inspect at twenty twenty-two.
Yes, I know.
I would be a proponent of saying, it stays as it is, because we got one person that is security another, and I don't know how many people outside of the uniform that have the spouses that.
You're saying potential new hires.
That don't have a family, potential new hires, is that, but we're gonna fight, we're gonna, they're gonna fight us, I don't care how we do it, you know. Cause just by nature, they don't wanna give up anything to deal with the act.
I can agree with you, I see what you're saying, so basically, I would say that we change same-sex domestic partners to a yes.
We have to.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't say no, no, and no against that. But I can agree that your thought is, if this one year, how many people are gonna come and apply that would have a domestic partner, what's the realistic?
Right.
To me, I, I'm the kind, I think that domestic partners should be removed from the plan. Going forward for good, I don't think that should be something that should be bad.
Everybody else, and I think we should take good heart look, and anybody else that can get insurance elsewhere should do it, because we're paying this. Geisinger stopped it, all these other people are stopping it, they're mandating, if you can get insurance, your spouse can, if they get it where they're at. And you have two single plans, or less, the one like we would have a family plan that has kids.
Will it affect their cost at all?
No.
It would affect long-term claims, if I had one person less on the policy.
That's what we're trying to find.
Are we agreed to keep domestic partners for both same and opposite sex?
I don't know.
All right, now let's just have a, a motion.
Motion is?
Motion to keep same-sex and opposite sex and, um, give for guesses to this.
Keep domestic partners.
Yes.
Both same-sex and opposite-sex.
Yes.
Cause you're gonna be a timeframe put on your.
It will be till next.
Well, the, until the next time you're meeting.
Next year.
No, but you're talking about timeframe, not all day, we're together.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With criteria.
Do you have that?
Do we, do we get the criteria in with this?
Yes.
Well, we do right now.
Can you decide on the criteria later?
No.
No, cause we have to tell them by Friday.
This one should be at least one year.
Yes, I think it should be longer than that.
Oh, oh, I don't know. One year, I mean, I can have a girlfriend for one year, and she just wants to suck off my insurance, I think it should be more, or, I think it should be longer, that's just my opinion.
Or, but, but these people have.
Right now, this year.
And we don't have any money for this.
Right, right.
All right, so.
I, I, that's just my opinion, I think it should be longer than, that's my opinion.
We're not lobbying you, we're lobbying what you said.
Right, Joe.
Well.
For, for.
Show you better words.
Living minimums, one year together, but what kind of criteria?
The, that they live for one year together, and then they can provide examples of proof that they're living.
In residence.
Supporting information.
Yes, supporting information, supporting documentation is what I would say.
All right, so that's my motion, keep both same-sex, opposite-sex, one-year minimum requirement of criteria.
One question, though, girlfriend lives off the two-three months, do you want to be notified?
Oh, if they move out at all.
That's a change to the.
That's a circumstance change, yeah. If, if the, if the domestic partner moves out. Then the employee must immediately notify us, um, and that's a requirement, if they don't, then that's wrong.
Maybe it works, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's fraud on the insurance company, so they really.
So there's a motion.
Another second.
I'll say. Karlovich?
Yes.
Geiser?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Brojic?
Yes. Yes, and one then, spouses. So we, so we need to figure out if we're keeping, making a vote, an offer, or offering at a cost of X dollars. So we have to vote on offer, or decide which one we're doing, we want. If we're, if we're not changing anything, there's no vote required. Yeah.
Well, actually, there is, somebody has to make a motion to keep it the way it is, because there are potential changes on the.
Possible.
Table.
Or I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying, so somebody, I think Rick actually already did, to be honest with you, but you can make a motion to keep it the way it is, to offer it with any spouse that has the ability to get, insurance must get it through their employer. Or they only have to get it through their employer if it's gonna cost them X percent.
I think we should mandate they, they get it to their employer, spouse can have to take, now, it's the dollar value, is the expiration.
Yeah. My opinion, going off of Jody and Kevin's, I think it's kind of short notice, like, they have a year, oh, no, excuse me, a month and a half to figure out all their finances to do this. I think, my opinion, this thing is a short notice, I think it's something we should look into next year, but my opinion, it's kind of a short notice, it should have the financial burden changed. That's what my opinion. Well, that's why I was gonna say, you could put an caveat, if their household, or they weren't paying with us. If the premium was gonna increase by more than thirty percent, they can stay on our plan as after, cause that's three hundred and fifty dollars. So if, right now they're paying two hundred and forty-three, so if their plan would put their total insurance cost, is gonna go up to more than three hundred and fifty dollars, they'd be able to stay with us. Now, though, if they were to go, if that was to take them from a family down to a single plan, they're gonna go from two, two forty-three down to ninety-nine. That other plan would then have to cost more than two hundred and fifty dollars for them to be able to stay on here at that point then. Cause then that's still what your total household insurance cost would be, so that would be my, if their household insurance cost would increase by thirty percent. They can stay, by thirty percent, above thirty percent, they can stay here with us.
Why can't they pay the difference to stay on our plan?
What do you mean?
You know, like, for instance, my wife was on Patty's over at Woodrow, and she had to pay for me to go on, and she had to make up that difference at two hundred and forty dollars, you know what I mean? That was more in for the single-door family.
Hey, hey, you had to pay the difference of what it cost the employer.
Single-door, yep, to a single.
So, basically, that would be then, an employee paying an extra two thousand dollars a month.
Well, I was paying sixty dollars a week, it was two forty, but anyways.
Yeah, so, but you're saying what the, so you, because to go from a single to.
Right, but you said the savings was two forty, it's like, that's pretty much what I. Right, but you said the savings was two forty, it's like, that's pretty much what I, who would pay her there, for me to be on her insurance.
I'm saying with the, I, I think we're talking about different things, maybe, so I think you're talking about what the cost to you would have been, but then you were saying that you had to pay what the cost to the employer was.
Then whatever, whatever, make it up to be on the cost of the employees.
Yeah, so with us, it's such a vast difference.
It is, yes.
Yeah, so that would be, if we were to say that, then they would have to pay us two thousand dollars a month to stay on our plan, if they went from.
That's what I'm saying, but you're saying the two forty part, they have the difference, of their percentage, but they pay the seventy percent, right?
They pay two forty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying if, basically, if they were to go to their own, their own plan, and they told them that their individual plan was more than a hundred and ten dollars a month, then they could stay on ours, at that point then, so. Yeah, I don't, I think that, I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm saying, if we, if they decide they were to stay with us, they should be paying up the difference that they, to stay on our plan.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
And you're saying, yeah, that you gotta risk.
Okay.
So if it's an extra five hundred dollars a month to keep your wife on the plan, they have, they should have to pay that five hundred dollars a month? That's what you're saying, right?
The difference is seven percent, you know, paying ninety-nine is a single, and it's two forty is a so they should make up that difference, pay our, no, no, it's more than that though, Cameron, I understand that overall cost for, for the city.
But they would pay that anyways, because they'd be on a family plan. So that cost would be the same.
Alright, alright, just don't add the one I had.
I see what you're trying to say, I just don't know that the math lines up in our situation, because it's such a big difference, if we had a, you know where I think it would make a big difference? If we had a.
Seven plus one.
Exactly, I think then at that point, we would have a big difference in cost.
I mean, with, with this bracket, we might see that.
We might see that, exactly, but right now, we don't, yeah, so instead.
That, that, we might see that, especially with Geisinge.
So that, I'm gonna make that motion, that contingent upon working with the union, that we exclude spouses that are offered insurance through their work as long as the total household insurance cost does not increase by more than thirty percent.
Not what you're paying, the one we're paying now.
For what they're paying right now.
Seven percent, whatever.
It's two forty-three. It'd be, as long as their cost doesn't go above three hundred and fifty dollars a month.
I, I have a question, kind of on that.
Sure.
But a lot of employers offer, if you don't pay mo, their insurance, you get a stipend to make a difference.
Yeah.
So, that stipend is now being taken away, and then you're paying more, so obviously that's part then, so they're, so you get what I'm saying there, so. So I, I just, um, I mean, I mean, I mean, they fight that and say, well, I'm, I'm losing my two thousand dollars stipend and paying an extra hundred and fifty dollars for insurance, therefore, I am paying more than.
Yes, I would say that, I, and, Joe, I don't know if that's a legal question, if that would be considered as far as their household insurance expense? I don't know.
That's one of those gray areas that there's no really to run into.
I mean, that's.
That's what I'm doing.
So, Josh, you're saying that if the spouse takes their employees' insurance, we hear from them.
No, I'm, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying you're talking about.
It affects their household income.
Yeah, because like, like, for the districts, we don't take their insurance, they pay us, we'll say, for example, two thousand dollars, now I could take their insurance, I lost two thousand dollars, and also paying insurance.
On the other side of the coin, that person that came over to arm insurance, which then the taxpayers would see in some way, highest insurance that his spouse came across.
Oh, no, I.
Then they get the stipend, so they're making money from their employer extra, and getting a free ride theoretically on our policy.
Oh, I know, I agree.
Us taxpayers covering the bill.
No, I agree, I'm just saying, it's just like you said.
It just would have to be whether or not that would count into the household insurance cost, what the stipend was.
It's a bonus.
Yeah, so would it count into that?
I wouldn't count it.
Yeah. So Chris, make that motion. I'm just thinking, I would say that the potential cost could be a hundred thousand people per person. That could be impacted, or realistically, twenty-four people potentially be impacted by that. So.
Twenty-four people, you said?
Twenty-four people, I have it, I'm right now, I don't know how many of them have spouses in the plan, I don't know how many of them
But I'm just.
Are offered, it, it may only be five, uh, twenty-four is the highest number that could be offered potentially to be impacted by it.
So you're saying, what would be the month, say, so what would be the increase that, I mean, what's the maximum they have to pay before they can say, now we can't, if they stay on? What's that number, I think thirty percent, or, so what, I mean, is there numbers that like, or, or that vary?
Hundred dollars a month.
It's.
Yes, three hundred, it's a hundred and ten bucks, a hundred and seven bucks a month, I, I just did a math this, as.
Like, around three fifty, around three fifty.
Yeah, I did two, the two forty, I divided by three fifty, it's thirty percent. That's what I'm saying, it may not be.
But for them, we get.
I love to say. And it, well, that's what ours is. I was just about to say, like, ooh, so as long as their, their employer's individual cost is not higher than our individual cost.
I mean, I think you'd find that very difficult, because like, for example, like, my brother worked for Coca-Cola, and they have good benefits, he pays five hundred dollars a month. Our benefits would stay too good.
I mean, that opens that question.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, you said it, because you know what you got. Alright, you know what I mean?
They should, I think that there's, if the spouse has an opportunity, I mean, I, I know you're thinking next year, but if the spouse has opportunity to get insurance, I don't think you should put a cost on it.
You think that would?
I mean, I think they, they, they should go take it, I mean, we're trying to save the city money, yesterday, I'm trying to save the city money. But then they're gonna get the opportunity, they have to go, they should just go, I mean, honestly, no matter if it's thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent.
The only.
We're out to save the citizen's money.
May have some that are gonna still be on a family plan with us, and are gonna absorb whatever that cost is, and that's the same for a new employee.
Like, if this, if we have a family plan with kids, then spouse, it's not costing us anything for having a spouse.
Nobody's gonna have to, it's gonna cost that.
You're, you're right about that, uh.
They're gonna pay the full cost of whatever that individual plan is, at that point.
Of this husband and wife.
That's where, that's where I said, if you, if you do as a thirty percent of the household, and you move, if, if they end up going from a, uh, family down to a single, it's gonna impact them less, so the people that have children on their plan are less likely to be impacted by this change versus the people that have no children on this plan. Because the ones that have children on this plan, unless their employer can offer them something for under a hundred dollars, they're gonna be able to stay on our plan. The people that have no children are likely gonna come off of our plan, go to theirs, because it's probably gonna be less than two hundred and fifty dollars a month, and the city's gonna realize those long-term cost savings at that point then, and that's that's my motion. Thirty percent household savings, excluding, I'm not gonna talk about the stipend directly. Uh, I wouldn't say thirty percent cost, say, thirty percent household increases, I'm sorry, household increases, public insurance cost, what the financials. That's my motion.
Alright, so a family.
Yep.
On, on a family plan with spouse and children.
Yep.
The spouse who has offered insurance from an employer must pay it still.
Unless the cost for their household insurance would raise more than thirty percent.
Right, even though it doesn't change the rate we're paying for their.
Yes, well, well, long-term, because our claims will go down.
I see.
Yeah, and, and eventually, this will be long-term savings for the city, and.
So spouse with children and spouse without children.
Either way.
All, doesn't matter.
It can't matter.
Exactly, exactly.
It can't matter, otherwise, I'm gonna have a baby just to.
Yeah, that would be very discriminatory.
Yeah, and then, yeah, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, so, the motion is to exclude spouse, spouses who are offered insurance through their work unless the household cost for insurance um, increases more than thirty percent.
And a contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Discussion with the.
Discussion with the police union.
Yes.
That's your motion?
Yep.
Alright.
Eisler?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
No.
Karlovich?
No.
The last one is that it.
Well, Chris, that's the, the bubble really gonna save a whole lot, seventeen thousand. We both, well, we had a really wonderful one.
One extreme with the. I can, I mean, again, I'm gonna compare, so my, my wife, municipal authority, they pay fourteen percent, and it's five hundred dollars. Thousand dollars.
Well, I know, because I have some.
Yeah, so again, I'm, I'm just saying, that's the max savings, just what I mean. I can go anywhere on this one, I, I think our two hundred, four hundred, so, but I see it as an advantage if our wages are.
Well, we're talking about the options there.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of option three.
Option three, you say go for the full five hundred, one thousand? The twenty-four employees would have an increase.
Because what if, if, what if you're going to hospital first? A little less thing every single time.
The claims are gonna rise, when you have a little bit of a higher deductible, you see your claims numbers go down, which essentially could, could help your premiums. Um, at the most, cost you're increasing about fifty bucks a month. Uh, if they, if they spread their deductible out over the entire twelve months, to go from four hundred to the one thousand, it's gonna be a lot of money to increase. But this is what I think. Nice thing also with option three is that the co-pays don't change. Emergency room stays the same, urgent care stays the same, R X all stays the same, everything stays the same, it's just that your total out-of-pocket cost goes up. And we're not impacting the cost of the plan at all, of what the employees are paying, just the. So if someone doesn't use the insurance in a year, their cost doesn't change. Their cost stays the exact same. So what's, so, I mean, personally, like I said, this is my opinion, like, we're doing the spouses, then you're making them pay higher deductibles, so it's a double whammy, right? There, for some, but not for all, but that's just my opinion.
Because remember, there is a savings for the employees, for the recent.
Actually, good point, I didn't factor that in, let me see how much they saved on option three. Three, four, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. It's not huge, it's very none. Well, it's, it's fifty-three dollars a year, is what they, is what they save a year, so, it's not huge, um, at all, but, there's some say.
I would say a dollar, but it changed.
Yes, sir. Where are you at on that?
Uh, I don't really care. I think, I think, when we get past now, I think we've got to noise it down, give it nuts and bolts, with this.
I mean, if I say we do anything, I say we do one, and say, well, but.
Well, I'm, I would be in favor of one and three.
Well, option one, they raised the co-pay.
That's raising the co-pay.
Yeah, I would do option two before I did option one. Because, yes, it's two hundred dollars and four hundred dollars more, but their co-pays would go um, up twenty-five dollars for urgent care, and up fifty dollars for emergency. On option one. What do you think on that?
I, I could go for option. I feel like I, I.
I don't know, that's just my, I could go for option two as well, I don't think it's a significant cost to raise on the employees, I think they still have a, a very reasonable health plan at a very reasonable cost.
And we still, we still.
We realize a little bit of savings on that.
Exactly. That's. Make your motion.
Alright, I make the motion to go with option two.
Contention.
Oh, contention, talking to the union. Second.
Second.
Who's second?
Josh seconded himself first.
I'll say, do I help instead?
Reese seconded, okay. Uh, Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Karlovich?
Yes.
Eisler?
Joey, if basically what would happen now, um, is meeting directly at the employee once, if you say, official vote, once the unions discuss what, you would discuss that with the neutral?
I will, or, top riding it on you. Yeah, it's a brat.
Yeah, it's a brat. Basically, how that, I said, we would.
I'm pulling myself.
An employee, or the spouse or one, would be a letter, would have to be signed by the employee that says, my spouse does not get coverage offered through their employer, my spouse does not have an employer, if they're self-employed or non-employed at all, if they do have, uh, if they do get it offered, they have to get that information by the end of the month. Because they have to update their plan as far as who's gonna be on the plan by December first, was that number? To that day, because if they're gonna come off, they would know that by December first.
So basically, it's answered, if, if your spouse or domestic partner or whatever is offered healthcare somewhere else, they have to take it. Right.
Uh, unless it's gonna increase your cost.
Okay.
More than thirty percent, so basically, say, if your monthly price is gonna go up above three hundred and fifty dollars, no, I'm gonna have to pay it. But they have to bring to us.
That, the cost.
They under the quotes, like, the, the plan comparison quotes, um, on there, or whatever.
Because we already have a draft form that can be filled out.
Yes, and, and I don't think this has to be spelled out, but it's, it's basically that they maintain a level of insurance that's similar, we're not expecting them to go take a ten thousand dollar deductible plan, because it costs eighty bucks, you know, that's not really.
One comment, Joey.